Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a Will County Planning Zoning Commission regular meeting of August 5th. And I ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Roger, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the meeting, I'm going to ask everybody to turn their cell phones down or put them in airplane mode or whatever so that the meeting will continue uninterrupted. And all of those who are going to speak tonight, I'm going to ask you now to swear in. So please raise your right hands. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. I do. Thank you. Have a roll call, please.
You sit there.
Here. Here.
Mitchell, here. Robert Battenhausen.
Here.
Aaron Warwick.
Here.
And Louis Navara.
Thank you. We have a quorum tonight. Our first zoning case tonight is ZC-25-053. And Kelly Krasinski will be our presenter. Is that correct zoning number? Yeah.
All right, so this is for zoning KC-C-25-053. The owner of the property is Jose Huerta and the agent is Marcio Inigueres with GDL Exteriors LLC. The applicant is requesting a variance for the maximum accessory building area from 1,200 square feet to 1,783 square feet. Here, the property is outlined in yellow. The parcel is located in Joliet Township along Black Hawk Road. The owner is looking to construct a 530-square-foot addition to the existing garage. With the addition to the detached garage, the subject property will exceed the maximum accessory building area. The applicant is requesting a variance to exceed this maximum accessory building area. Additionally, the applicant is looking at building the addition along the existing footprint. The existing footprint encroaches on the southern side yard setback. The property has previously received a variance back in 1990 approving the southern side yard setback encroachment. Here, the property is outlined in red. It's zoned R5 and it's surrounded by other R5 properties. This is the plot of survey with the addition to the garage shown outlined in red. This is looking at the existing residents on the property. This is looking northeast at the subject property. This is looking at the fence line on the northern parcel. This is looking north along Black Hawk Street. This is looking northwest across from the subject property. This is looking west across from the subject property. This is looking southwest across from the subject property. This is looking south along Black Hawk Street. This is looking southeast at the adjacent property. And finally, this is a view looking at the existing garage. So a full analysis can be found in the staff report. But to summarize, Section 1 of the variance review criteria, staff finds that the owner is not due to unique circumstances as the request is based on a personal preference to build in addition onto the existing garage. Staff also finds that the granting of the variance may alter the essential character of the locality. While there are other properties that exceed the maximum accessory building area, this would be one of the largest accessory buildings in this area. To go over Section 2, staff finds that the desire to exceed accessory building area is a common request across all zoning districts. But a variance for maximum accessory building area is for personal storage is a personal request. Staff finds that there is no physical hardship that exists on the property. The hardship was created by the current property owner wanting to build in addition to the existing garage. Staff also finds that the variance would not be detrimental to the public as a building permit is required and it will be required to meet all applicable codes. Of agencies notified, there were no comments or objections received. But staff is recommending denial for the variance request for maximum accessory building area. I'm happy to answer any questions and I believe the applicant is also here.
I have no questions. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. Are there any concerned citizens or objectors to this case tonight? No? Okay. Would the applicant or his agent please come up to the podium? Right over here, please, gentlemen. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please give your name for the records.
Yes, my name is Marcio Inigueres, president and owner of GDL Exterior Incorporated.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Jose Huerta, owner of the property.
Thank you, sir. The question we have is, obviously, the staff is united because it's more square footage than is allowed by our current law. Can you give us a reasoning why you want a larger area on the garage?
Well, I own like four classic cars and I like to storage all my cars inside the garage.
Inside.
Instead of outside.
Okay. There any other questions from?
I have it outside. Two inside and two outside. Yeah.
In the, I'll ask then, in the one photograph, they showed a lot of cars out in the street in front of a residence. Those were your cars probably then? That was in front of your residence?
I'm sure they're driveway, I think.
They're not my, this is a driveway, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other questions? Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like a motion on case ZC-25-053 slash V-25-082.
Mr. Chairman, I would like a motion for case ZC-25-053, item V-25-082, approving a variance for maximum accessory building area from 1,200 square feet to 1,783 square feet.
Second. I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
John Keatner.
Yes.
Mitchel.
Yes.
Roger Battenhausen.
Yes.
Louis Navara.
Yes.
Aaron Warwick, yes. And Chairman Beeston.
Yes. You're okay, gentlemen? You'll have to get your permits now. Our next case tonight is case ZC-25-057 slash M-25-008. Kelly Krasinski is going to present this one also.
Yeah, so this is ZC-25-057. The owner of the property is Suzanne Buston. The agent is Letharius Zematitis of Manhattan Land LLC. And the attorney in primary contact for this case is Nathaniel Washburn with KGG. The applicant is requesting a map amendment to the I-1 zoning district to operate a truck repair facility. Here is an aerial view of the property with the property outlined in red. The subject property contains three separate pins. The parcel combined will have a total of about 13.85 acres and 775 feet of lot frontage along Manhattan Road. If the map amendment is approved, the parcel would meet the minimum lot requirements for the I-1 district. Here is the zoning map with the parcel outlined in red again. The subject parcel is split zoned A1, A2, and R3. To the north of the property, there is R3 zoning. To the west and south, there is the Sugar Creek Preserve owned by the Forest Preserve District of Will County. These properties are zoned agricultural, A1 and A2. To the east, there is an I-1 zoned property that was previously received approval of heavy equipment sales and a truck terminal. And then the purple area to the north is the City of Joliet boundary. Here, this is a zoning map showing the zoning within one-mile radius of the subject parcel. The zoning districts within one mile include agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial. Here is the City of Joliet zoning map. The subject parcel is shown towards the center of the screen there. Here is the plot of survey of the property showing the existing conditions. And here is the preliminary site plan for the site. The applicant is proposing to operate the facility from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It will have approximately 20 employees with 10 customers per day. The applicant intends to generate approximately 50 vehicle trips per day. Per the proposed site plan, the development will include an office and 12 separate service bays. And then they are also proposing 25 car parking spaces and 44 truck and trailer parking spaces. This is looking south at the subject property. This is looking southeast at the subject property. Sorry. Yeah, it's delayed, sorry. All right, so this is looking east along Manhattan Road. This is looking north across from the subject property. This is where the railroad property is located. All right, this is looking northwest across from the subject property, also looking at the railroad. This is looking, oh, it's loading. This is looking west along Manhattan Road. This is looking southeast at the subject property. This is looking at the existing residence that will be demolished. And here is an aerial view of the subject property outlined in red.
Ask a question while you're here then?
Mm-hmm.
So then, we saw a lot of pictures with houses. So there's two that are being cropped out and the third one will be demolished as part of the property then?
Correct, yeah. All right, so then this is looking at the subject property from an aerial view looking, oh, went back again, sorry. This is looking south at the frontage along Manhattan Road. And this is looking at, or it's not up yet, sorry. This is looking at the southern portion of the property where the creek is located. All right, to go over the map amendment review criteria, a full analysis in the staff report. But to summarize, within a one-mile radius of the property, there is a mix of uses in unincorporated Will County and the City of Joliet. These uses include agricultural, residential, public, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses. In unincorporated Will County, there are various residential subdivisions and individual homes. Along Manhattan Road, there are both commercial and industrial uses. The commercial uses include contractor yards and auto parts stores. The industrial uses are concentrated more towards the east of the property or east along Manhattan Road and include several truck terminals and truck repair businesses. Within the City of Joliet, the land uses are similar. There are residential subdivisions, commercial businesses, public schools, and significant industrial warehouses and distribution centers along Laraway Road that's to the south. Now, kind of going over 3 through 6 of the map amendment criteria. The agent intends to use the property for truck repair. The use would not be permitted in the A1, A2, or R3 zoning district. Truck repair is permitted in the C3, C4, I-1, I-2, and I-3 zoning. Staff believes that the proposed zoning change to I-1 would be compatible with the existing zoning districts within the area. This is because the trend in this area has shifted towards industrial development along Manhattan Road since 2015. There have been recent approvals for map amendments to industrial truck terminals and heavy equipment sales on adjacent parcels to the east. The proposed zoning change aligns with the Will County Land Resource Management Plan, which supports industrial uses near arterial roads. The site's location is also located near the Elwood-Joliet freight cluster and existing truck-related uses. Lastly, the lease-to-score was 134, placing in potential growth in incorporated areas. Of agencies notified, there were comments received but no objections. Will South Cook in Water, or Soil and Water Conservation District, provide comments in the NRI report. These can be found in the staff report. And then the Illinois Department of Natural Resources found there were no threatened species or habitats in the area. And finally, staff is recommending approval of the map amendment to I-1. I'm happy to answer any questions and I believe the attorney, he's also here, if you guys have any questions for him.
The only question I have is, if I'm reading it correctly, they're open seven days a week, is that correct?
I believe so, yes. That's what the application stated.
It says Sunday through Saturday, so I assume that's the case, okay.
Yep.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any concerned citizens or objectors to this case tonight? One, okay.
We'll call it three.
Oh.
Three hands will now come up.
Okay.
Four.
Four, all right.
Yep.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. I presume Mr. Washburn is going to speak next or? It's either going to be you or the agent and I wasn't sure which one. But I saw you here earlier, so I assumed it was you.
My client and the real estate broker and representative are all out of town, so I'm the only smiling face you get this evening.
All right, good.
Nate Washburn with KGG LLC. I am the attorney and representative for the applicant. I think staff did a very good job summarizing the request. It is, to your point, going to be open seven days a week. However, you know, the hours are, what I would say are fairly typical business hours, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So this isn't a 24-hour-a-day facility. You know, it's kind of your standard auto repair shop type hours. You know, it is a 12-bay facility. It's at least intended to be used primarily for repair of the applicant's own vehicles, though given the, you know, size of the facility, you know, depending on the growth of their own business, it could end up, a portion of it could end up being leased to another truck repair facility. But we're not looking for any special use permits. You know, we do intend to take all of the soil and water and other comments into consideration as we go through the building permitting process. And we would ask for your consideration and a vote of approval. And I'm certainly happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay, I have no questions. Anyone have any questions?
And here it says that it's going to be truck repair in here, but there's also going to be truck parking, like?
Yes, so that's necessary and ancillary to the repair business. So typically, how these repair facilities operate is they're semis, so sometimes it takes time to get parts in. So they will usually have one vehicle in the bay being worked on. And at least either, sometimes they get a tractor and trailer brought in because the tractor broke down, they leave the trailer parked in the yard while they work on the tractor portion. And there's also usually a queue of other vehicles waiting to get in. And if they're waiting for parts, we need a place to keep them because it's inefficient from a cost-benefit standpoint for the business if we have to tow them off the property to have them in a remote storage lot, then tow them back to work on them.
Okay, but 44, they'd be able to park up to 44 vehicles there?
Yeah, so there's 12 bays, so you figure there's one in every bay, that's 12. And then if there's one waiting to be repaired for every bay, that's 24. And that's, you know, again, some wiggle room for if a tractor and trailer come in together to leave the tractor, you know, the trailer portion out there parked while they do the work. So typically, my understanding from other facilities is they usually try to have a three or four-to-one ratio of parking to repair stalls.
Okay, just seems like a lot of vehicles and one space to work on and one spot, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from anyone? Would you please take a seat up front?
Absolutely.
We'll hear from the concerned citizen. I have concerned citizens, would you please come up and get in line? I mean, that's the quickest and easiest way to do this. Please give your name for the record, sir.
Horatio Garcia.
Okay.
I'm here to express my strong opposition on this proposed industrial development at 918 Manhattan Road. As a resident of 1,000 Manhattan Road, I will be speaking for the residents at 930 and 926 Manhattan Road. We are deeply concerned about the potential negative impacts this trucking, this truck repair facility could have on our community's environment, quality of life, and overall the well-being of our families. Any form of trucking business can present several challenges to a homeowner, including noise pollution. The trucks can be very noisy due to the engines, the braking, and the trailer movements. The noise can disrupt the peace and the quiet of the neighbors. I myself drive a commercial vehicle and I am aware that they are a big disturbance. The air pollution due to the diesel exhaust and the idling and operating the trucks contains particulate matters, nitrogen oxides, and other harmful pollutants that can negatively impact air quality, potentially leading to respiratory and other health problems for nearby residents. This challenge personally affects my family due to my daughter having asthma. The increase in the traffic congestion also decreased property values in the proximity to this trucking company. And the associated, with the associated noise pollution and the traffic can negatively impact the property values, making it less appealing for future potential buyers. Groundwater that feeds into the well waters could also be contaminated by the fuel or oil spills. I was also told by one of the attorneys that they are planning on putting some berms around the properties. This would also affect our scenic view on our homes and, most importantly, altering natural drainage systems, potentially directing to our foundations and our well systems. I urge you to carefully consider the concerns raised by myself and my fellow community members to reject the industrial development at 918 Manhattan Road. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, if I could just ask Mr. Garcia a couple of questions. So I think where my fellow commissioner is worried about and what would probably disturb you is if five or 10 years from now, you find out that 40, 50 over-the-road truck drivers are coming in and using this parking facility. Trucks coming in, cold weather, they turning on eight or 10 trucks, them idling overnight. So after we're done with the public comment, I'm going to ask staff some questions. I think they can answer you questions about the burn and the exhaust and whether or not they can work on vehicles outside or if they have to be working inside, how long vehicles can be idling. But I want to ask you specifically about the burn. It's my understanding that a burn will be required. So if this facility were to go in, would you rather have the burn and block the visibility of the trucks? Or would you rather be able to see into the facility? Because, let's face it, we have a staff recommendation here and we need trucks. And one of the big complaints of everybody about the trucks on the road is they're being driven by unsafe drivers or not being well-maintained. So I'm thinking myself as a commissioner, if I keep denying cases that say we can't have truck repair facilities and you drive a truck, you know they're not going to go away unless you know, buy in this stuff. We owe it to the public to give them facilities to repair the trucks. So we don't have... so we don't have accidents that happen because of poorly maintained trucks. So back to the berm, would you rather have a berm so you can't see the facility that's there? Or would you rather be able to see the setting sun coming over the parking lot and through the trucks and the building?
I would rather see the berm.
Okay.
Yeah, on the berms, they plant plinings that screen. Usually, sometimes they'll even put fencing up, but usually they plant fir trees or something that come right together, so.
But then the reason I go over this a lot of times, too, is your concerns are not different than a lot of other people's concerns. And the county does have a lot of rules. But we find out that five, 10 years later, 15 years later, and I'm not saying this applicant will, or facility sell, people don't follow those rules. So it's also important that you know the rules. So if you think something's not happening and you're not happy, rather than being unhappy and complaining about it, there is sometimes recourse for you.
Yeah, that is one of my concerns, because we already have industrial development next door, which is a parking, I believe, took a trucking company.
How long have you lived there?
I've lived there for almost eight years.
You weren't there when the Christian Youth Center was open, then?
No.
You would have probably liked them much better as a neighbor. But you know it used to be there, correct?
Yes, and the company that took over that, they're much farther away, and I hear their trucks at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. I had an offer to sell from that owner, and I believe that they're the ones that are going to take over this place. So I'm, I think that what's going on over there is going to be the same thing, and I'm going to be hearing at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, trucks banging. I understand they make a lot of noise. I drive one myself. It's very loud when you connect your trailer, you know? But the letter that I received in the mail says that there will be minimal noise. And I don't, I don't believe that one bit. I also don't think that they're going to work from eight to, I'm not sure what time it is, but.
Well, they do mention in here that they're going to have everybody off the ground by 6 o'clock. So unless the guy's sleeping in his cab and is going to sleep there all night, I doubt they're going to be running to do it. Except I do know the diesel sees up in the winter, so.
And reefer trailers, too. They leave them overnight, and it's pretty much another engine, just loud noise, so.
We may not be able to give you all the answers you want, but we'll at least try, at least.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who can ever come up and testify? We represented all four of you, okay, that's good. Would you care to come up, sir?
Mr. Washburn, would you like me to ask my questions of the staff before you speak?
Dealer's Choice, if you think that, certainly I was taking notes, I'm happy to give my comments to their concerns. And then if that doesn't satisfy your concerns, of course, you're always welcome to talk to staff, but whatever you think is going to be more efficient.
You go first, and then you can comment again after the answer.
So certainly, it sounds like a berm, you know, if this were to be approved, the berm is going to be better than no berm, which is what I would have thought. But certainly, if staff was willing to agree that we could do without one, certainly, you know, I think my client would be amenable to saving costs on the earthwork involved. As far as idling, you know, again, all repair would take place indoors. Truck repair outdoors is not permitted, so that would occur in the facility. The only thing that would be outdoors would be anything that's waiting for repair during business hours, you know, again, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. You know, there would not be anything idling overnight. There also, to the best of my knowledge, so this part, my client has not mentioned anything about reefer trailers, which is refrigerated trailers. They have pretty noisy equipment attached to them, but that, to the best of my knowledge, is not anything that they are in the business of dealing with. Their facility is essentially non-refrigerated good, or their business principally is in transporting non-refrigerated goods. So the repairs they would be doing would be on, you know, your standard tractor-trailer. So that should not be a concern. As far as the water quality, the surface will be paved or gravelled, and all, again, all the repair is taking place inside. So any fluids, there'd be oil and grit separators and other required safety measures per, you know, both the county's code and the IEP A to make sure that there's not groundwater intrusion in terms of any chemicals or things that shouldn't be there. With regard to noise and air quality, you know, certainly there's going to be a level of increase over the current baseline. However, this is on Manhattan Road adjacent to at least two existing truck facilities. And the key distinction, while those facilities do, particularly the one at the old Christian Youth Center, that's a full-blown truck terminal that can run 24/7 and, you know, do far more intense things than this business would be permitted to. We're not seeking a special use for a truck terminal. We are only going in for a rezoning to I one, and truck repair is a permitted use in that district. So while we are working to try to accommodate, and certainly if there were certain reasonable requests, you know, we'd be willing to entertain them. But, you know, this wouldn't be a 24/7 operation. It's not going to have trucks getting hooked up and jacked up at, you know, all hours like the terminal next door can be permitted. And I can also say this, that the facility next door also happens to be one of my clients. I think I got the special use for the sales use that they have on that site. To the best of my knowledge, that individual is not affiliated with the applicant. So their concern, I believe, is unfounded that that particular individual is going to somehow end up with this property. You know, my client that's purchasing this is investing serious capital, and, you know, for a variety of reasons, I don't believe that that is a, anything that's going to be in the works, at least not as far as I'm aware. I believe that more or less covers their concerns, and I'm certainly happy to answer any other questions any of you may have.
You cover your concerns, Shannon?
Well, I just verify with the staff which one wants to. So the berming, that is indeed required, that is standard written in the, for this. And I, you did cover the special use permit. That's why I was going to ask them if this could eventually become.
They, somebody down the road could apply for a special use permit, but that's not what we're seeking. And we did have discussions about that with staff. And my client actually, I can't remember if I originally submitted with a terminal request attached or not, but we have changed any plans after hearing some of the feedback. The individual that Mr. Garcia referenced was not an attorney. It was the real estate broker who was communicating with some of these. And based on some of the feedback we were getting, any idea to use this for a terminal was scrapped, and we went with a straight rezoning to use this as a repair facility only.
So for the record, and for Mr. Garcia's knowledge, then, since they're not applying for a special use permit for a truck terminal, this cannot be a truck terminal. If they do start to operate in a truck terminal-type way, and the neighbors think that, they would be able to call the land use department to have them investigate that. If they wanted to ever operate as a truck terminal, them or somebody, the current code requires that they come before this commission and do just what they're doing now, have a public hearing for it to become a truck terminal. And then as far as the screening, that is required with this request, though?
Um, yeah, screening will be required for all of the parking. And then as well, because to the north it's residential, they'll be required to provide land use buffers along like the northern property line. So that could be a berm, or there's other ways they could meet that requirement.
And because there is no outdoor working of vehicles out in the parking lot, but the land use waste management also requires certain restrictions on the, any fluids that come from the site. Storage of tires can't be outside, correct? All the things that I've heard multiple times, but I can't recall them all right now.
Correct, yeah, the resource recovery and energy, yep, the requirements, yep.
And then the only other thing that I think might concern our neighbors if this were to be approved is the time limits. We have times given in the application. Are those etched in stone in the code? Or are those time limits that they can change? Say they start staying open till eight or nine o'clock at night. Got you on that one?
Yeah, I mean, you, since this isn't a special use permit, you can't like, we can't add a condition to restrict them. So I don't, there's no way it could be enforced.
So technically, they could do like Jay Merrill Jones on Larkin Avenue, run two shifts of mechanics and work overnight. If they get so overwhelmed, they could technically, with this application, put on night shifts and stay in their truck repair facility till midnight with this application, the way it is. And that would be your understanding?
I disagree.
They would have to adhere to the noise ordinance. So if they were creating noise off the property that was considered a nuisance, and that's enforced by the sheriff's department, they would come in and enforce it after, I think, 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock at night, depending on day of the week.
Yeah, so that doesn't mean, though, that if two years from now, a semi pulls in at 8:30 at night, they're not violating anything with this application?
If that's, there are hours of operation, potentially, it would just be, you know, as long as they're not creating noise.
Supposedly, no one's on premises past the last hour of operation.
But we have had cases where truck terminals fire up early.
Also, we have a lawyer standing before us who's taken an oath here tonight, to tell the truth.
I have, and I was going to say, you are right. This is something that, these are the hours we are proposing. They could be changed in the future. However, these are the hours that we expect, you know, with 12 bays, you know, if we're using them all efficiently, there should not be a need to extend those hours, per se. But also, it is buttress by, you know, again, repair has to take place inside. There is a noise ordinance. And certainly, some of what you were suggesting, you know, if there's trucks coming in and out at 8:30, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, that tends to, because I've represented enough of these clients over the years, that tends to send up red flags to code enforcement. And then usually, those people get a nice little notice letter saying, "We think you're running a truck terminal." And then we have to jump through a great many hoops to either verify that we are not, in fact, doing that, or, you know, if the client happens to be doing that, pay the piper for not doing what the code permits them to do. But there is, at this point in time, you know, it would be a newly constructed facility that we believe can operate within those hours. And that's something that I made sure, I told the client, if this isn't what you intend to do, you know, if it's going to be eight to eight, or if it's going to be, you know, 10 to seven, you know, give me the hours you need to operate. And eight to six was what I was told, was what they needed to accommodate their current business practices.
Also, they have 20 employees, and no one wants to pay their employees overtime unless they're forced to.
Certainly.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. We have no more questions from anybody? Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like a motion on case ZC-25-057 and M-25-008.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to case number ZC-25-057 and MAP Amendment Number 25-008, a move for the approval of a MAP amendment from A1 slash A2 slash R3 to I1.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Roger, Ben Housen?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell?
No.
Ron Keener?
Yes.
Louis Navrat?
Yes.
Aaron Warwick?
No.
Yes.
But we are just a recommendation body on this one.
Yeah, you're.
And please be very forthright with your client, which.
August 7th, is that what time now?
They get in trouble.
11:00 AM?
Do they come back?
August 7th at 11:00 AM is the next hearing body. You want to come and object to, or place your objections, that's the time to do it. Our next case tonight is ZC-25-042 slash S-25-020. And Jesus Pruseno will present the case.
Okay. Yes, I'll be going over zoning case 25042. The owner of the property is THC LLC. The agent is Anna Garcia of Kismet Restaurant LLC. The applicant is applying for a special use permit for ancillary liquor service to add liquor service to the existing restaurants. First here, we have a view of the subject property outlined in red. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Lincoln Highway and 78th Avenue. There's an existing commercial building on which the restaurant Kismet currently operates from. The restaurant is open seven days a week. The applicant is looking to add video gaming to the restaurant. Acquiring a video gaming license requires a pour liquor license. The zoning ordinance allows a pour liquor license in two use classifications, ancillary liquor service, and a bar/tavern. If the special use permit is approved, the restaurant will be able to offer alcoholic beverages to guests to go along with their meals for dine-in only, not for carryout. Section 110.55 of the Liquor Control Ordinance does the next, there's a next to hours in which alcohol can be served on the property. Here we have the zoning map. The subject property is Zone C2. The village of Frankfurt is located directly north and east of the property. To the west, that property is also Zone C2. And to the south, the property is Zone R2. We have a plot of surveys showing the existing building, as well as the property boundaries. A few pictures of property, first of you looking at the existing restaurants, the view looking west at the existing building, the view looking west at the existing parking for the restaurant behind the building, the view looking south down 78th Avenue, the view looking north at the intersection of 78th Avenue and Lincoln Highway, and finally, the view looking west down Lincoln Highway. Just to quickly go over the special use standards and review criteria, a full copy of the staff analysis can be found in the staff report. But to summarize, staff finds that special use permit will not endanger the public safety, nor general welfare, nor will it be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties. If the special use permit is approved, the applicant will be required to obtain a liquor license from the liquor commissioner's office. The applicant will also be required to adhere to Liquor Control Ordinance, as well as state laws pertaining to liquor sales and video gaming. A commercial remodel permit will also be required for the gaming room as well. For agency comments, only the village of Frankfurt sent a comment. They sent an email basically stating that while the property is within one and a half miles radius of their boundaries, it is unlikely that the property will be annexed into the village in the near future, so no additional review is required by the village. With that said, staff is recommending approval of special use permit with the four conditions listed on the screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions. This is the, this is the same place that we recently gave some latitude to in their parking, right?
Yes, this was a recent, I believe it was a couple of years ago, but I believe it was like a special request to allow parking in, because I believe some right-of-way was taken from Ida. They were not allowed to park in the street setback, basically. So there was some concessions made there for parking.
Okay, thank you. I thought I remembered that.
Yes, yes.
So any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Jesus.
Thank you.
Are there any objectors or concerned citizens to this case? There are not. It's the owner or agent here, Miss Anna Garcia. Would you care to come up and speak, ma'am? Would you care to come up and speak, ma'am? There are, there, I'm just offering you the opportunity. Okay, there are no objectors here, so, and we have a recommendation from staff of approval, so we'll just take a vote then, if that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you wish, ZC twenty-five dash zero four two, S twenty-five dash zero two zero, given a staff recommendation, I seek approval of a special use permit for ancillary liquor service. With the four conditions.
With the four conditions, yes. And a second, okay. I have a motion and a second, may I have a roll call?
John Keefner?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell?
Yes.
Roger Beckenhausen?
Yes.
Louis Navrat?
Yes.
Aaron Warwick?
Yes.
And Chairman Houston?
Yes.
Okay, you're approved.
S U P still go to the county board, but not T U Ps? Yeah. That's six and a half years, I'm getting smarter.
Our next case tonight is ZC dash twenty-five dash zero six four slash S dash twenty-five dash zero three zero. And Ashlyn Kirby will be the presenter.
Thank you. So for ZC two-five zero six four, the applicant is requesting a special use permit for ancillary liquor service. The property owner is Noble Center Lincoln IL LLC, with Neil Efron and Tracy Ambrose and Breen Snow having interest. The agent is Steve and Demetrius Barinas. And the agent is requesting zoning action to obtain a liquor license on the property to sell beer and wine, as well as video gaming. So the subject property outlined in red, it's within Frankfurt Township. The village of Frankfurt, the village of Tinley Park, and the village of Madison are all located within the mile and a half radius. Property is currently zoned C two, being five point five acres in size, with four hundred and fifty-nine feet of frontage along Harlem Avenue. Property is improved as a commercial strip mall with various uses. Per the property record card, the commercial strip mall was constructed in two thousand and five. In two thousand and nine, the property was improved for a special use permit to operate a drive-through window for a fast food restaurant. Dimitri Best Food Frankfurt now operates the unit, improved to the drive-through. Dimitri Best Food Frankfurt is now requesting a special use permit to sell alcohol on the property as an accessory use to the restaurant. The applicant also intends to have video gaming on site. Video gaming is seen as an accessory use to the liquor use. An on-premise liquor consumption license is required to obtain a video game license on the property. This is the zoning map, C two. This is a plot of survey for the property. The subject lot is on the corner here. This is facing east, looking at the intersection of Harlem Avenue and Volmer Road. Facing south, looking at the entrance from Volmer Road. Facing north, looking at the parking lot. Facing west, looking at the subject property. Looking at the dining area within the restaurant. Looking at the ordering station, a menu. Looking at the restaurant cooler. Looking at the proposed video gaming area within the restaurant. Looking west at the drive-through area. A full analysis of the special use permit review criteria and standards can be found in the staff report. But to summarize, the applicant intends to sell beer and wine on the property as an accessory use to the restaurant. In addition, the applicant is interested in having video gaming in the restaurant. Restaurant is already operating within the commercial strip mall, attempting to receive a liquor license to assist with the restaurant's revenue. A recent zoning case for a bar was approved for a different unit within the commercial strip mall in July of two thousand and twenty-five, under ZC two-five zero one two, to also allow video gaming. Staff finds that the proposed use will be less intense than the adjacent bar use that was recently approved in July. The restaurant already generates traffic as is, and will not generate much additional traffic based on selling alcohol as an accessory use. Of the agencies notified, no one objected. Staff received comments from the Frankfurt Fire Protection District stating that they would like to see this building service their sprinkler system. And then we also received comments from the village of Frankfurt, basically saying that no additional review is required, as they are unlikely to be contiguous with the village of Frankfurt. Copy of the comments are included in the staff report. I do want to mention that approval of a building permit will be required for the video gaming, where fire department approval is required. With that being said, staff is recommending approval of the special use permit with two conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, you said they're contiguous?
They are not.
No, they are not.
No, not to the village of Frankfurt, that's why no additional review is required.
Yeah, so totally unincorporated area there.
Yep.
Thank you. So any other questions?
Did you say that they were just gonna be serving the liquor license just for beer and wine, or is it all alcohol?
I believe, I believe it's just beer and wine, but maybe the applicant will be able to explain better, it just depends, from what I understand, it just depends on the liquor license that they get for what, if they could sell everything, but from what I understand, it's just beer and wine.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be hard liquor to qualify for the state gaming board. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ashlyn. Are there any objectors or concerned citizens to this case? There are no objectors or concerned citizens to this case, and we have a recommendation of approval. Your gentlemen are welcome to speak if you care to, but if you don't want to speak, we'll just take a vote. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'd like a motion on ZC dash twenty-five dash zero six four and S dash twenty-five dash zero three zero.
Mr. Chairman, case number ZC dash two-five dash zero six four, special use permit two-five dash zero three zero, move for the approval of a special use permit for ancillary liquor service. With the two conditions as noted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, may I have a roll call, please?
Roger Beckenhausen?
Yes.
John Keefner?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell?
Yes.
Louis Navrat?
Yes.
Warwick?
Yes.
And Chairman Houston?
Yes.
All right, Chairman, you're taking care of.
I find the land use for showing pictures of food when I haven't had dinner yet.
Yeah.
I saw them, I was like, oh.
Have my balls. This is one case. This is one. The next case is ZC dash twenty-five dash zero two zero slash S dash twenty-five dash zero three one and V dash twenty-five dash one hundred and V dash twenty-five dash one oh one. And Marguerite Kenny will present our case for us, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this zoning case takes place in DuPage Township. The owner is one-seven-four-three-eight Bluff Road LLC, where Roberto Mendoza and Yehiro Mendoza are each fifty percent interest. And the attorney representing the applicant is John Simpson of Simpson Detilo LLC. This property may look familiar, it was before, this commission earlier this year requesting an appeal to pursue this zoning request. As the appeal was granted, this is the case before you, they are requesting a special use permit for a landscape business in an R two residential zoning district, which does currently go against what the zoning ordinance states. The appeal allowed them to apply despite that fact. So the R two district is a residential zoning district, and landscape businesses are typically permitted by right in industrial zoning districts, just to give perspective. The applicant seeks to operate the landscape business from the rear of the property and has eight commercial trucks and eight commercial trailers associated with this business that would be stored on site. As the R two district limits the number of commercial vehicles parked on site, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow the sixteen. So we are considering both vehicles and trailers total for that variance. And then also with the R two district, they restrict the number of parked vehicles on a constructed driveway to five. And when you add the commercial vehicles the applicant will have, they are requesting a variance to allow the twenty-one vehicles on a constructed driveway. So per the application, the hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM, and Saturdays, eight AM to three PM. There would be eight employees who come to the site to pick up the vehicles, the supplies, any other equipment, and then they drive to the job sites to perform the actual work. Deliveries would be made to the site. And then in the back, there would be outdoor storage materials, supplies, merchandise vehicles, equipment, and other similar materials, not for direct sale, but related to the business. And the applicant is not proposing any new buildings at this time. Really, they're just looking for the back of the property to be more of an outdoor storage yard at this point. But the applicant is here with the attorney, and they can discuss further. So on the screen, I have a zoomed-out image of the subject property. The property is located on the north side of Bluff Road. It's about one-half mile east of Joliet Road. And it is lot twenty in Reed's Crest of Hill Estate subdivision number four. This was a subdivision that extended between Joliet Road and I three fifty-five, before three fifty-five extended south, and was primarily built in the nineteen fifties. Since nineteen fifty-five, this area has seen the trend more towards industrialization. You can see the large warehousing developments from the north and also from the south, within the villages of Woodridge and Romeo Ville. So you can also see in contrast, primarily the residential areas to the east were further subdivided since nineteen fifty-five as well, to be smaller lots, but houses have been improved on most of them. So this area is a mix of industrial and residential uses. The village of Woodridge shares the northern property line, and the village of Romeo Ville shares directly south across Bluff Road. Woodridge is also in the process of developing six parcels immediately west of this property into another warehouse development. That's actually ongoing right now, and you'll see it in a couple of photos. So zooming in on the property, the property is about two acres in size and has two hundred feet of frontage along Bluff Road. The property, as mentioned, is zoned R two, it's single-family residential. The site has access to Bluff Road via a gravel driveway to the south. And then you can see from the aerials, there is a dedicated driveway for the landscape business in the rear of the property. The house dates back to nineteen fifty-eight, and there is a detached garage as well. And you can see in terms of the proposed outdoor storage yard for the landscape business, it's roughly the northern half of the property. This property is in violation for site work without a permit, so a lot of gravel came in on the property. They would be required, if the special use were to be approved, to get the necessary permits to address the requirements. They are working to remove some of the gravel, so that they do not have to provide onsite detention. And all that would be addressed as part of the permitting process. I do want to point out, the parcel directly on the right-hand side also was approved for a special use permit back in two thousand and twelve for a landscape business, and you can see roughly the fence line, that northwestern corner is roughly the size of their landscape business. They actually are using that, looks like a private vacated road, but it was formerly Catherine's, I think, way, that they accessed the site to the back. And that neighbor followed a very similar process of what is going to occur tonight and through the county board process. So just looking at the zoning map, you can kind of see the area, it's outlined in blue, we have R two, we have A one, and then we have industrial office parks, business parks in the area. And then the area that's indicated with red is just that warehouse development. And again, just showing Village Romeo Ville's current zoning, and you can see the subject property outlined, and then the future land use plan for Woodridge, just showing this area being industrial. The plot of survey on the site, or of the property, is shown on the screen. And then looking at the site plan, it is a little inverted, but north is to the right. It's important to note that residential district requirements still control the majority of the requirements on this property. And these controls are designed to restrict uses occurring within residential areas that prohibit intensive commercial activities that generate higher commercial vehicle traffic volume and things of that nature. And based on the applicant's requests with the variances, the applicant is addressing the need for more intense commercial vehicles and things like that by requesting additional variances. Typically, with a residential property, the license plate classifications come down to class D or class TA for commercial vehicles and trailers, and the weight is about ten thousand to twelve thousand pounds for a vehicle. And class TA or TD trailer is between three thousand to ten thousand pounds. The applicant currently actually has heavier weight standards on their trailers. They withdrew that variance request as part of this application, they are proceeding with an appeal that will come forward at a later time, but it would to allow heavier classifications on the site if approved with a variance. They still would need site development permits to come before the county to make sure that they comply with the water resource ordinances, as well as building and zoning requirements with landscaping, screening, things of that nature. So just some photos, this is looking at the subject property from Bluff Road. This is looking inside the property at the existing residence, as well as that separate driveway for the landscape business. This is looking inside the landscape storage yard, this is looking north and northeast. And this is looking north and northwest, and you can see the development within the village of Woodridge. Those parcels most likely are annexed already, as we do not have permits for the work. But they, our records tend to lag when annexations occur, just because of the process with recording and tax assessments, things of that nature. And then this is looking south towards Bluff Road and that driveway. And then this is looking west along Bluff Road and east. So the criteria by which special uses are evaluated upon are shown on the screen. Just like the two before, you know, an in-depth analysis can be found in the staff report. But to briefly summarize, allowing the operation of a landscape business in an R two district parcel negates the zoning ordinance determination that such a use is inappropriate in residential districts. The potential noxious effects such as odors, dust and debris, noise, and excessive traffic of heavy vehicles and equipment are not compatible within a residential area or subdivision. It could further exacerbate the rapid industrialization of this area. It's staff's professional opinion that the use will be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted, given that this would contribute to increasing traffic onto Bluff Road and generate odors, dusts, debrays, and noise. And it would continue to diminish or impair the property values within that residential neighborhood that still exists to the east, as they are becoming more landlocked from Joliet Road with all the industrial uses. Allowing another landscape business in the R two district would create a precedent that reduces the effectiveness of the zoning ordinance, which protects the normal and orderly development within the county. The zoning ordinance does not allow landscape businesses to operate on residential properties, unless it's within a scale that could qualify as a home occupation. And this extent, or the extent that this business is proposing, it would far exceed something that would operate as home occupation, something that would occur from the principal house, and maybe have some minor storage contained inside a building on the property. The activity adjacent to the, this particular property that was approved back in two thousand and twelve was closer to what the requirements of a home occupation requires. However, the big key is outdoor storage. Home occupations do not allow outdoor storage. So in terms of this, the residence, you know, with a landscape storage yard in the rear is not seen as being compatible with the aesthetics of a residential subdivision, nor is it compatible with the large warehouses in the area either. And the property must adhere to the R two And the property must adhere to the R2 district lot and building standards. And this use would require additional variances because of the exceedance of commercial vehicles being kept on the property as well as how many vehicles onsite in all. With regards to the variances, again, the criteria are outlined on the screen and an in-depth analysis is in the staff report. But to briefly summarize, staff finds that the plight of the owner is not due to unique circumstances. The purpose of these variances is necessary to accommodate an unsuitable land use on a residential property. Staff finds that the variances, if granted, would alter the essential character of the locality. The general provisions applied to the R2 districts would be greatly reduced should the variances be approved. And the eastern property was limited to six commercial vehicles. And that's a couple dump trucks as well as trailers, which appear to be kept inside a metal pole building. This applicant is requesting more than double of what was permitted next door. And this area is transitioning towards industrial warehousing. But this area also still has a residential neighborhood and allowing heavy commercial vehicles to be stored onsite would negatively impact that character. Staff is recommending denial of the special use. Should this commission disagree and recommend approval, staff recommends the following nine conditions. These conditions mirror or are very similar to those applied to the adjacent landscape business. It is important to point out that since 2012, the 2018 zoning ordinance actually changed some of the requirements. So those that are no longer applicable were removed, but many of which just ensure that this property is tailored for this use and reduces the impacts to the residential area. Of the agencies notified, none objected. The NRI report did not conclude any impacts to the existing land. And the ECOCAT, while identifying protected resources in the area, found that adverse effects are unlikely. And then to continue with some of those conditions, out of the nine conditions, the last one is related to Resource Recovery and Energy's standards, typical IEPA requirements. Staff did remove one in terms of having outdoor storage because staff was adding condition number seven or recommending condition number seven, saying that a principal building should be established in the back of the site. So it's not just an outdoor storage yard. It is an actual landscape business operating from this site. And staff is also recommending denial of both variances. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Kenny, as I remember, the other property that was granted permission was granted only permission for the back part of the property. Is that correct?
I don't recall, but I do believe in terms of their scale, it was reduced from the full property.
This, this is asking for the whole two acres to be special use permitted.
Correct. But again, they are restricted in terms of how much storage space they have. They do not want to do onsite detention, which requires a detention pond. That would get up a large chunk of its property for having that onsite as well as with the house and the garage having well-inseptic onsite. That would definitely impact the size and scale.
Just alluding to the fact that the vehicles that are owned by the property, by the business owner could be placed up front where everybody could see these construction vehicles and the, you know, I'm assuming when you say he's heavier than standard, that he's probably has vehicles with heavy equipment on him like backhoes, et cetera.
Yeah. What he's proposing is similar to what a semi truck would be classified as or some of the heavier construction trucks and trailers, equipment would haul for their particular use. I don't believe the adjacent property has the trucks parked in the front. They're basically geared towards the back because again, there's a residence in front of the property. Again, feeding into that residential character of the area.
I'm just saying though, with the whole two acres, they could move things around to suit themselves. I mean, I know they don't want to park heavy equipment on top of their septic field, et cetera, but, okay. Any other questions?
I do. I didn't see anywhere near the number of employees they're anticipating.
Eight, eight coming to the site in the morning and then probably eight leaving the site. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so I was real conflicted when I read the staff report because I'm like, but we approved one next door. And I kept trying to read it to try to understand what the staff was coming at. And then I realized, well, yes, it doesn't fit in the residential. It all these other properties to the west. But now tonight you come and tell me they're all being raised and there isn't even residential to the west. So the other alternative here then is map amendment to, that's really what it comes down to. It's the residential district. But then when I say, well, granted, he's bigger, we'll say, more intensive landscape industry than the guy next to him. It's a nice transition. He's the biggest one. The only neighbor he has that really would complain is the warehouse or the guy that's a little less. It is a good buffer to have the neighbor. It seems like the perfect fit. So that, you know, and last night I read it would deter or affect the quality of life and other things. I'm like, made sense. But now tonight I'm like, well, maybe it doesn't make as much sense. Because there's only one real neighbor and he's already running a landscape business, granted on a smaller scale. So I'm glad you threw in the clarification too of a at-home business too. You have these, you might have one or two employees, but you wouldn't have. Are we under the understanding that the applicant or the operator of that business lives in the house too?
That's my understanding, but the applicant is here. He can answer that for sure.
Would you rather see this be a map amendment than, maybe I shouldn't ask that question. Would it be the preference for the, if it was a map,
I would ask that question.
Do you have to be asking for a commercial?
Well, in terms of the area, they could request industrial where a landscape business would be permitted by right, but they would need a principal business or building. So just having an outdoor storage yard, that would be a special use in I-1 or I-2. The area is going industrial. It doesn't seem like there would be challenges from either municipality in the area in the immediate vicinity.
That's true.
But they would need further zoning for the residence. They would need,
Kind of backed in the corner.
Correct. This is one avenue they're trying in terms of costs. It's a little bit less than having to go through, you know, a map amendment and then a special use and potentially variances.
And further north, if I remember on that road, there is a blind child. They've got a sign up saying danger blind child. So I don't know if that's still the case, but the sign's still there as far as I remember.
I don't recall driving down seeing that sign, but I did come off Joliet Road. And there are a few residences caught between the new warehouse development and Joliet Road. A lot of them have large pole buildings in the back that appear to have maybe a business operating from the back, but it's so far screened. And we haven't had complaints on them. So they're getting away if they're operating anything or they just have, you know, a big pole building.
The last property on that road before you run into the villages is owned by a former county board member who runs a honey business out, has a berry with bees.
My understanding by looking at the map, that's all been raised and is part of a warehouse now. I once had a picnic on that property. It's all gone.
Okay.
There is not a single residence on the south side of Bluff Road, west of the Forest Reserve.
Okay.
Some of the most beautiful scenic views in all of Will County.
Right.
I have one more question. Seeing that there's going to be some trucks with trailers, some with that, what is, I don't know, the rating on the road for those kind of vehicles?
That's a really good question. You can kind of see from some of the photos, the road does not look like it's in great condition. It does not look like there was any widening or improvements since they came in with the warehousing developments to the south within the last 10 years. So my guess would be it's in need of some improvements to handle.
There's no weight limits on that road. Do you know?
I didn't see any.
There couldn't be bees right across the street as a warehouse.
Right.
So then I'll go back to, if I make the assumption here, there's the most one person that would want to comment on this other than the applicant. So the only people that were really notified this was a property in Woodridge to the north, the property to the west, which is being raised, the property to the south across the street, and the landscaper to the east. Those are the only four adjoining properties. So all the residents to the east, the ones that you say may be impacted, they wouldn't know about this unless they drove west and saw signs. That's a logical conclusion that I'm coming to. So, you know, you're saying they could be impacted. And obviously I would think that if many of those people felt that, they'd be here if they knew about this case.
Yeah. And just driving that area, I mean, Bluff Road, you either take it east under 355, which then takes you towards Barfall Glen and Le Monde and all the developments that way. But that's a long drive down Bluff. Or you take it to Joliet Road, which is maybe a quarter mile. And you have commercial developments. You have, you know, your stores and things of that nature. So I think that traffic tends to go towards the west, towards Joliet Road.
Somewhere they have to go.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. Are there concerned citizens who object to this case here today? One, okay.
I made a correct assumption.
Mr. Simpson, the attorney for the case? No, ma'am, I'm going to call an attorney first, okay? I presume you're going to be the prime contact that we're going to speak to, correct? Okay.
If the committee or commissioners are okay, I'll be a little unorthodox because while it's fresh in everyone's heads, I'll try to address the points so everyone's up to date here. My name is John Simpson. I'm the attorney for Simpson-Datilo on behalf of 17438 LLC. It's owned by two brothers, Roberto and Jairo Mendoza, who are sitting here in the gallery. Effectively, I know there's some new faces, so I'm going to do my best to give you a little bit of background. We are asking for the same relief that was granted to the neighbor to the east with a little bit of a caveat in that we're asking for eight trucks. Throughout this process and in the last 10 years, when counties and villages were talking about vehicles, no one really counted trailers. They probably should have and based off the definition, that would have made sense. But effectively, if you have eight trucks with eight trailers, if they're connected, they're eight vehicles. If they're disconnected, they're 16. So I know it seems like a very large number. We have no objection whatsoever if this commission's will is to limit it to eight trucks and eight trailers to specify. No one's trying to pull a fast one where it'd be 16 trucks and no trailers. I just want to make that very clear. As the seasons change, as the needs of their customers change, they may have to, in the beginning of the day or potentially at the end of it, switch around trailers. And there will be a point where they will be detached or could be detached, not will be. And obviously there may be drop-offs of supplies or employees coming onsite temporarily to then take their work vehicle out. They don't all show up at once. So where we kind of reached that magic number was a little more than a majority of the employees might show up at once, park their vehicle, and then leave with their work truck. So that's where we came up with that number 21. I know it seemed a little odd, even I thought it was odd. But if I said 16 and there were eight trailers and eight trucks and one person came onsite with their personal vehicle to drive the work vehicle, we would be in violation. So we did our best to try and balance all of this. Commissioner, Kiner, did I get that right? Commissioner, you did a phenomenal job. Just you're catching the catch 22 we're in. We debated whether to do a map amendment. Effectively, if we do a map amendment, it renders the property useless. And we do have employees that use that property as a residence. So if I were to map amend it to industrial, they aren't allowed to sleep in that unit. We would have to come back then for additional zoning relief. And then we would effectively be asking for industrial zoning. There were some photos here. Am I able to tap into the system, Ms. Kenny? Is there, if I brought my computer and a way to do it, is there a way to be able to show it? Or is the commission okay if I show my laptop? I mean, I can, if I can plug into this and control it here, I brought something I just wasn't sure. But unless you, there's a way to get it on there or I can send the photos as well if that's helpful. But what I wanted to make sure it gets across the commission is these photos, I believe Ms. Kenny was onsite less than two weeks ago. And if you look at the ones facing to the west, if you can, right there, it's worth noting that there's nothing but vacant land, except in less than two weeks, that's the picture you're looking at. So they've already got the prefab concrete already up. And I, I think that speaks a little bit, because that's a nice view. You know, that, that looks more residential or even agricultural. But that view is lasting less than a month and it's already changed from when Ms. Kenny took that photo to now. And to belabor the point here, to my client's northeast, there's an industrial building. To the north is an industrial building. Now to the west, there's going to be an industrial building for 225,000 square feet. It's been approved. It's been annexed into Romeo or into Woodridge. It started off on the development proposal at 125,000 and now we're at 225,000. There's room for over 52 semi trucks that are going to be onsite. In addition, that's happening now. Subsequent to this body providing the zoning relief to the immediate neighbor to the east, all of that southern Bluff Road went from family farm to industrial. And that adds approximately another 100, at minimum, 100 to 150 trailers. Well, there's truck trailer stalls. There's also dock doors. So if they're all filled, you're talking about hundreds of 18-wheelers that have the ability that are coming down Bluff Road all the way east past the residential area. And if there's a way to get to the map to show kind of the satellite view of Bluff Road, I think that would be helpful for the commissioners or to at least explain it. Okay, perfect. So if you can just below the outline of the blue box, there's two access driveways to the east there. All of those trucks coming off Joliet Road have to drive past it and that's their entry point. So they can't enter all the way from the west. That building can, which also has another about 60 trucks all the way to the southwest corner. But all of the other buildings are serviced to the east. One of the other points that I'd like to make sure you're aware of is, as we're talking about, and Chairman, I know you addressed the fact that they were limited to the part of the,
Yes.
their lot. I believe you're correct. We have no issue with having a limitation. The reason why we can't replicate it is because of our access. We need the access from Bluff Road on the south. If you recall, when they were in front of that body, they used St. Catherine's Crossing, received the variance to go on that crossing and they enter into the backyard.
Right.
But it's worth noting, there's six residential properties that are immediately to the east of that. So their vehicles actually have to go past residential in order to enter the premises. Whereas what we're looking to do is enter from Bluff Road, keep all of the employees parked to the back along with the commercial vehicles and then fill in the required fencing or rush or whatever's necessary as part of the zone. When we went and compared with best zoning options, we went through home occupation with staff. We talked about similar and conforming use. And we are absolutely on this island of misfit toys. And I, I don't envy your position as commissioners because I think what's most difficult for everyone here is we're dealing with three comp plans. We're dealing with Will County's, Romeo Ville's, and Woodridge. And unfortunately, when people annex into it, it doesn't matter what Will County's position is anymore because they just changed what the character of that area is. And so we saw what happened to the east and we thought that was, we read through the transcript and the journal and dialogue related to it. And I thought that was a very well-thought-out explanation of creating the buffer of industrial use and then slowly allowing a residence there, but allowing its use to be something that would be, it's not, their use is not akin to what these industrial warehouses are. And I do believe there's a little confusion, maybe in how I relate it to Ms. Kenny. We are not going to have 18-wheelers. There's not going to be any semi trucks on here. When that prior applicant applied, your zoning code was a little different. And it allowed a variance for up to 25,000 or 26,000 pounds. Code has subsequently changed the way it defines it by using state license plates, which is used to govern the roads. So one of the commissioners inquired, can we meet the road limit? And the honest answer is we have to because there's 200 semi trucks that are driving it that are three times our weight. So, but the, that's a But the, that's a separate matter, that's why we'll be here, just simply for an appeal. It deals with the weight, essentially the classification discussion. But what we are looking for are the exact same terms that you provided to the neighbor to the east, who also has provided a letter of support. And I wasn't sure whether to bring it again, I brought it for the appeal overturn.
It has to remain with our staff.
Okay. This is Mr. Serrano, who is the neighbor to the east, who received the zoning relief that we're talking about. He's also in support of us having this as well. He's been a good neighbor. My clients and him get, you know, they're, they're on great terms. And again, everyone's trying to do the same thing. He resides there and obviously would be very much against if there was noise or vibration or odors. If you look as close as possible, if it's possible to zoom in, you'll notice that they, you know, the northern parts look similar. It's not necessarily the prettiest, but it's meant to be orderly, it's to their benefit. And we are trying to make changes, but first and foremost, we want to be in compliance with the county. And so that's why we're here first. So there is discussion over, should we put up a building, because the neighbor at one point did? They still have what looks like an outdoor storage area or areas to park the vehicles, but we do like that. It's cleaner. We just have to try and work around this 25,000 square foot requirement. One thing we're struggling with, or one thing that we had to change was our accessway, because we had to do the driveway all the way from Bluff Road, all the way to the back, whereas they only had to go from St. Catherine's Crossing over, which was probably half, if not maybe a third, of what our length is. And so that's kind of the best I could, at least addressing the items while they're fresh in your head. We were here before you on the appeal. Again, it wasn't, there's no animosity, I think Ms. Kenny did a great job. I just think unfortunately, this is a very, very unusual parcel in which 80% of the circumference of this property is now surrounded by industrial or it's equivalent, because sometimes they, you know, I think it's PBI or something else, but it's industrial equivalent by all three sides. And I'm saying 80% because there's a building to the northeast, that white building. So effectively, this has made a C, an uppercase C around our property. And then the person just to the east has exactly the same zoning I'm looking for. So that being said, the hardship, although staff does not, or believes it's at, essentially caused by us, I don't believe so. I believe the change in the area has led to this. I believe the annexation to the west has certainly done this. And in a humorous way, the only thing I could say is, the only complaints we had from prior applicants here today were talking about the noises and sounds of trucks. So if our eight trucks, which are not 18-wheelers, are going to alter and change the neighborhood, I would only ask that the body take into account that there are 200 trucks to the south that are 18-wheelers, 65 to the west, another 80 to the north at least, and another 40 probably to the northeast, given the way it's parking on both sides. So respectfully, I don't believe we will impact the neighbors nearly the rate that they have, nor the access that the east neighbor has to use St. Catherine's Crossing. Because we are not going to pass by, other than the initial residential in the very beginning, from Juliette Road. All we're gonna be passing by now is a six parcel industrial building to the north, three industrial buildings to the south, the industrial building to the northeast, and then the residential but industrial use neighbor to the east. And again, his letter of support's there. He's very much aware of the driveway and the access areas. So we would ask that you support it as well. But again, we did ask for a little bit higher on the variances to allow eight. In full disclosure, there were, the neighbor's relief was six. So we do have a little bit larger of an operation. But I would like to note that although he was granted six, I don't believe in practice, they accounted for six trailers and six trucks. I think they've always viewed them as one. So I would just ask for the same consistency. I don't wanna have a scenario where one of them's unhooked, and now it's, there's 16 or 10 or things like that. So I'm okay if this body chooses to limit it. That would be, you know, this is what we would like. Obviously, we'd be more than willing to try and do anything possible to make the commission satisfied. With respect to the hours, the neighbor, I think, was limited from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through, Sunday through Saturday, or all days. In this instance, we would ask six through six, Monday through Friday, and six through three, is it eight through three or six through three? Eight to three on Saturday, no work on Sundays. Sunday's resting for the employees. We, this came up previously, there's no intention of snow plowing. I know that came up prior as well. And the only thing, I know we do have a resident here, the only thing that I would be mindful of as well is we're about to have 60 trucks to our west, which has a detention pond between our property and their property. So those trucks are likely, the sound is going to carry of, you know, 18-wheelers backing up. I just would be mindful of, our eight work trucks are not nearly going to alter that, like 60-something 18-wheelers. And we felt that this was the best way to allow us also, just to come full circle, to allow us to be able to utilize the industrial use of the property. Because if we did a map amendment, effectively, we have a four, how many bedrooms is it? Four-bed, couple-bath office for a landscape business that simply goes to waste, and no one could sleep there then. So it just, in this day and age, it seemed like, let's not take one less resident off of the rolls for people. I think. I think that's, that's all I've got. The Woodridge, in case I didn't say it, they approved it, I believe, in March of 2025. They're still ongoing, I think they're still trying to get buildings to the west as well. But again, that's the annexation issue. While everyone's trying to figure this out, we're stuck between industrial, 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 but we're supposed to be residential, and then the neighbor's using industrial use. So it's kinda, who wants to move to our house first? You know, and we have to get the necessary zoning relief, and that's where we're hoping this body comes in.
Thank you for your testimony. Would you take a seat up front?
Yeah, absolutely.
Respond to the concerned citizen? Yeah, right there, either one, wherever you're comfortable. May I hear from the concerned citizen? Good evening. Please give your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Kathleen Hurst. I live at 17222 Bluff Road, so I live roughly six residences east of the proposed variance. And in trying to be a good response, first of all, to answer your question, was I ever notified? Absolutely not. I happen to be driving home, and I saw, holy cow, there's a big sign. The whole new freight forwarding that's on the north side of the street is already something that is not, obviously not something that I'm in, in great elation over. But the fact is, is that the residents who were there decided that they were ready to sell their houses, that's their right. And so we, as residents of the area, you have to allow people to do what they feel is best for them. The reason I'm here is I decided I would walk over today and take a look at the property. So I wasn't just here saying, oh, you know, you're just a crazy lady in the neighborhood who doesn't want progress. And if you look at the differences between those two properties, the one that is actually, that is just east of their property, not knowing that it was a landscape business, so there's the first thing. You live right down the road, you don't even know that it's a landscape business. It's absolutely out of home and garden. It's beautiful. I took pictures in case people wanted to see, but I couldn't believe that it was, that, you know, that it was so beautiful. Certainly not as pretty as, you know, my home is not as nice. And so I looked at the neighbor next door, and it's like, I tried to call, knock, you know, hello, anybody home? And nobody answered, which is fine. And so I just noticed that, like, the building, the paint is peeling on the, on the house. The, it's not sightly at all, it's not well-kept, there's garbage in the, in the yard, you know, from probably their employees and things like that. But the fact is, from having read the information that your staff brought up, it sounds like the people to their east did everything the right way. You know, they, they asked for the variance, they went before the, the community, they did things the right way. And as a neighbor, you can't tell that they're running a business, a significant business out of it. It's not intrusive. It's not something where it's noisy or smelly, or you feel like, oh my God, I wish they weren't there. You know, this, these people sound like they didn't do it the right way. They did what they wanted, they got caught, and now they're trying to fix it so they can do it the right way. And as a neighbor, that's not the neighbor that I'm looking forward to having. I doubt that if they're there waiting to do something and only going to amend it if they get caught, or if it's been brought up, that they're, you know, they're the best neighbor. And I guess the other thing to answer your question about the road, because I've lived there since 1987. The fact is, is that the road is, is heavier. It was built up when they put in the freight forwarding, the newer southern freight forwarding. So now there's like a middle lane down it, so you can turn one direction or the other, so that the trucks have somewhere to turn off of, because otherwise it's way too tight. But we, as residents of Bluff Road, have seen a huge amount of truck traffic. I mean, not that it's, you know, great amounts, but there's a significant amount of truck traffic that is coming from the east on Bluff Road, not just the west, where it's supposed to come from, but from the east on Bluff Road. So the road is getting all beat up. There are so many new people that are driving on Bluff Road, not just the trucks, but, you know, people who are working there. The road is getting a lot of use, not just the improved part of the road, but the old part of the road. And when you talk to the local township, the township says, we don't have a budget for that. You know, we get a tiny amount of tax dollars in the township to be able to maintain the road. We're lucky if all we can do is go through and patch it with patch every year a little bit. The state was supposed to have come up with some money to resurface the road. I believe it was supposed to happen last year, and then the, the money fell out of the budget. So I guess what I'm saying is that I understand your concerns, that you're stuck in kind of a, you know, with that new development, that that's an issue. But I don't know why you couldn't have just tailgated on with the rest of them. And again, that's not my, that's not for me to have to have an answer to. But the, all of the concerns that staff brings up, from the standpoint of a neighbor, are real. You know, we've seen so much change on our road, and it's been, it's sad. When I went to, because I did go to the Woodridge meeting of that new subdivision that's, you know, of the new freight forwarding. And I listened to some of the notes that I had taken, I looked at some of the notes that I had taken, and even at that, the developer said, oh no, we're not gonna, you know, the, the person on the, the board said, you know, we're concerned about some of the old forests in there, it's beautiful there. You know, what are you gonna do to try to maintain that? Well, we'll do our best, we're gonna make sure that we don't pull any of the old trees down. When they did that work, all the trees went down. It is absolutely desolate. When we had that hard rain a week and a half ago, there was tons of mud just flowing across the road. I could barely get through going west on that road, because I had an appointment and I had to go out. It was just horrible, I was afraid I was gonna get stuck. And this is the new neighbors that we're asking for, which this is not your particular zoning variance, but the fact is, is that it's only a continuation of more traffic, more smell, potentially definitely not a good citizen in the neighborhood, like the neighbor to the east is. And so I'm just stating that I feel someone needs to stand up for the neighbors. We're real. We don't want all of our houses to go away. And that's selfish, but we've earned that right. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Would you care for a quick retort, sir?
Again, just because this has been a long process, and I'm sure the neighbor might, is likely not even aware. We are following the exact same process that the neighbor to the east did. And it's probably not known by her, but the neighbor to the east had the same exact issue. They were cited by staff, they were cited by the county for the exact same reasons. They took the exact same steps. You can't make that neighboring property look as it does until you get the zoning relief that it does. You can't get a building permit until this relief is granted. So we can't make it look any more remotely similar to that. I'd also like to point out, as a different member of a zoning board commission, there's always a catch 22. If you respect the rights of the homeowners, then my client could have sold this, and was, they were trying to buy his property, which would have only increased the number of 18-wheelers to the property. So we can't have it both ways here. We can't say, give them the ability to do what they want with the property, but then when we do, I was also at that Woodridge meeting, and they were ready to basically burn the developers with pitchwork. And I don't wanna impugn by any way the young lady who's here speaking, that wasn't her. But there were a lot of upset neighbors, particularly those who were in the middle and didn't want to sell. That there was a lot of controversy between neighbors supporting it, because they were compensated greatly, versus neighbors that weren't. In terms of property values, the fact that this is sought by industrial is probably going to be the greatest increase of value that we'll see, as opposed to just natural appreciation. So my client, in this regard, is actually keeping the residential character of the building, which is on the front edge. We didn't try hiding it, we followed everything that staff required for mailings. And just so you know, your requirement is a three-foot by three-foot poster board, and I think we have a four-foot by eight-foot. Nothing was trying to be hidden, I'm happy that she's here. I think it's helpful to understand that, and I don't think it's by any ways malicious, but I think it's helpful that we would like it to look similar to the neighbors. We need the zoning relief to get there. But I do wanna make clear, they didn't follow it initially as well, and I understand it. I'm a zoning attorney, it took me years to understand this. But if you're my client, and you see industrial to the north, industrial to the south, basically talks of it going to the west, and the neighbor doing the exact same thing to the east, and you're in the middle of COVID, you probably would think, yeah, I'm able to do it. Not saying it's right or wrong, obviously, there's a statute that says otherwise. But we're trying to do it the right way. And I did mention this to the overturning one, so like I said, there's a couple new people here. I would point out, similar to the neighbor to the east as well. Both of these violations were complaint-driven by what appears to be an unknown resident that coincidentally always seemed to accompany with an offer to buy the land shortly thereafter. And since that complaint was done 18 months ago, to the best of my knowledge, Ms. Kenny could state otherwise, I don't believe there's been another complaint against the property since then. And I just, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I would just ask that the board be mindful that now that this has been annexed and the zoning relief granted by the village of Woodridge, it seems very coincidental that the complainant, who also accompanied an offer, it seemed very unusual, the timing that an offer to purchase the property occurred almost instantly after a violation. So I'm not, again, not justifying it, but I think it's important to know the motivations there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I would like to have a motion on case ZC-25-020, and S-25-031, and V-25-100, and V-25-101.
Mr. Chairman, case number ZC-25-020, special use number 25-031. Move for the approval of a special use permit for a landscaping and lawn maintenance business, along with the nine conditions as noted.
I have a motion, and I have a second. May I have a roll call?
Roger Beckenhausen?
Yes.
Don Keefner?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell?
Yes.
Louis Navarre?
Yes.
Warwick?
Yes.
Chairman Hughes?
Yes.
Same case, number ZC-25-020, variance number 25-100. Move for the approval of a variance for maximum number of vehicles permitted in a residential district from five to 21.
I have a motion, second, may I roll?
Yes.
Don Keefner?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell?
Yes.
Louis Navarre? Louis Navarre?
Yes.
And Chairman Houston?
Yes.
Same case number ZC-25-020, variance number 25-101. Move for the approval of a variance for maximum number of commercial vehicles and/or commercial trailers to be parked on a constructed driveway within residential zoning districts from two to 16.
Second.
I have a motion, second.
Roger, Beckenhausen?
Yes.
Don Keefner?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell?
Yes.
Louis Navarre?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Chairman Houston?
Yes.
Okay. The majority is rolling in the way of your client. So, um, do we have, do you have copying this? There is no executive session registered, no announcements? Do we have any of that? Okay. We do have announcements.
So Chairman Walter, talking right now, um, question for the, um, case 25-020. Did everyone receive the minutes of June 17th? By, by way of email? Okay. Did anyone else receive them and read them?
The minutes for June 10th, I thought it was.
Am I under oath? I read them halfway and forgot to come back to them, which occurred to me on the way here.
Would you like to go around them tonight or the next meeting in August 19?
Well, on our form, it says there are no minutes to vote on. Do we have to change that legally? I'm asking our state's attorney.
He said it was okay that I bring it up and if everyone has read them and feel comfortable with voting, we can vote on that tonight. However, since you do have them, if you don't want to vote on them, we could vote on it on August 19th.
Do we have a consensus? Everybody get to read them?
Let, let you do it to 19th.
All right. Do it to 19th, please. I have in mind, I read them.
Okay, great. Great. So we will vote on it.
So can we stay on this for, did you send out notice specifically about this meeting? So I sent you an email Monday morning or Sunday night because I never got my packet.
So the packets were, were mailed, usually either hand delivered.
If they're smaller, you mail them. These are not $20 to mail.
Received the packets last week and I, I thought maybe our US mail would, um, be more proficient, but evidently they weren't. Um, did everyone receive the, their packets in the time of the matter?
I did.
Well, I, I got the packet, but I didn't get an email telling me that there would be a meeting. And usually when you send that email, it, I could, I could have reviewed the cases online, but I, I don't remember getting that email and I looked for it. Did everybody else get it? An email just saying that we are having a meeting and you usually...
I would have received that yet because we have a new...
Ah, okay. Because normally I, if I don't have the pack, which I prefer looking at the packets on my computer, but that's why I want to at least not come in here blind and not know what the cases were.
Send new instructions on how to do the meeting online with a new...
Ah, okay.
Should you want to do it that way, that's fine. If you prefer not receiving a packet...
No, no. The, the packet was good, but I was looking for an end around since I didn't have the packet. And so now I know there will be an end around to link to the website. I want to be a good commissioner and know what's coming, not be looking at it this night.
My responses are the same as I've told you when we first started. If I don't receive the printed packets, I expect the county to provide me with a computer. So. Okay, the, the next thing, our next meeting will be August 19th, 5:30. And, um, and I understand that it may be Mr. Gugala's last meeting.
Gugala has decided to resign.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Matt was a very good commissioner and, uh, it takes a long time to replace commissioners nowadays. So I hate being understaffed.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign? Okay, we're adjourned.